The Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure and Maritime Transportation calls this public hearing to order. It is now two P M. on Wednesday, April second, two thousand fourteen. Present with me today, to my left Senator Aileen Yamashita. To her left is Senator Brent McCready, to his left Senator Chris Duñez, and far left Senator Tonyara. Thank you gentlemen for joining me today. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on the executive appointment of Mister Oscar A. Calvo to serve as a director to the Jose de Longuero Commercial Port of Guam's Board of Directors. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on March twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, and an amended notice was provided on March twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen. And the forty-eight hour notice was provided on March thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is being also broadcast on local television, so please speak clearly into the microphone when you are at the panel table. The committee will continue to receive written testimony and address testimonies to Senator Thomas Ada, Chairperson Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure and Maritime Transportation. Also want to recognize the presence of Senator Tommy Morrison. I'm sure that, I'm sure the other senators will be coming along to kind of balance it out. We'll start off first with receiving testimony from members of the public, and then I'll receive testimony from Mister Calvo. And then we'll open the floor to the panel members to ask whatever questions they may need to ask. Signing up to provide testimony is Mister Francisco Santos, Mister James Marquez, and Mister Henry Simpson. So gentlemen, if you step forward please, and we'll just start in the order of sign-up. So we'll start with Mister Santos. Please identify yourself for the record.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of your committee. My name is Francisco Santos, one of the board members for the Port Authority of Guam. I'm humble and honored to be here in this confirmation hearing for Oscar Calvo. And I know Oscar for many, many years as a friend, and also I believe that Mister Calvo has been a public service for the people of Guam for many, many years. And I believe on base of his management, skill, leadership, and experience, I believe that he will be a great help to serve as one of the board members for the Port Authority, and also to help in the moving forward of all the other projects that the port have at this present time. Based on his management, also he have a good attitude, he have a good character, and also he'll be helpful for the management and staff for the Port Authority of Guam. So I humbly ask for your support and to confirm him to serve as one of the board members for the Port Authority of Guam. And I want to thank you so much, Jesus Massey, for allowing me to speak on behalf of Mister Oscar Calvo. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Santos. Mister Marquez?
Good afternoon, Mister Chairman and all honorable members of the committee. My name is, for the record, James Marquez, and I am a brother-in-law of Oscar Calvo. Unfortunately, my sister passed away years ago, but I'm here to speak in favor of Mister Calvo, of Oscar Calvo. And let me start out with his, where his foundation came from as far as his family. I'm sure all of you sitting up there, members and chairman, you know Mister Calvo yourself. However, I want to speak about his family, where he came from, because I personally know Mister Say and Mrs. Hermia, Hermia Calvo. We go back twenty-five years or more. My parents were able to meet their family, as well as all the siblings. He come from a very respectful family, very humble family, all committed to their religion, committed to their community. And like Mister Santos just mentioned, he has, I believe he has all the skills to become a director, based on his background coming from his grassroots. One thing I know about Mister Calvo, when you task him to anything, he's, he's committed. He's loyal and very, very persistent. Likewise, on top of that, he's a team player. And I think that's the ingredients needed to be in that position. Anytime you have to make serious decisions that will impact not only the community, but the whole Port Authority employees. The only thing I question about Mister Calvo, he still denies the fact that he doesn't dye his hair. Till this day. But anyway, I thought I'll throw that in. As said in my testimony, I'm in favor of Mister Calvo, and I hope you consider all the people coming forth to talk to about him. Jesus Massey, thank you very much, and good afternoon also to the one sitting behind us here. Thank you very much.
Mister Mayor?
Good afternoon. Honorable Senator Ada, the committee. I am Deli Alvarez, Mayor of Santa Rita. I came before you today to testify in behalf of Oscar Calvo as a member of the Port Authority of Guam Board of Directors. We all know the determination, stamina, and work experience Oscar has. His passion to work hard for our island in his former position in the government of Guam. His willingness to give back to our communities in any way he can. Oscar's a doer, a hard worker, an achiever, and a great asset to any organization. But my support for him does not come so much from the fact that he has had a long career of service to our island and our people, but more so because he is a resident of Santa Rita, and someone that came forth to offer his help to me and my community despite my political difference with him. I believe that he will display the same enthusiasm and energy in his position as a board member as he has had when he was the chairman of the Tomorrowland Trust Committee. He has the qualities of leadership that are important, that are important in making sound, decisive, and responsible actions and decisions. I humbly ask the legislature to fully support Oscar A. Calvo, and to give him an opportunity to make good things happen at the Port Authority of Guam, along with all the other Board of Directors. Jesus Massey.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Mister Simpson?
Good morning. Buenos, buenas, hola. My name is Henry Simpson, and I'm here to testify on behalf of Oscar Calvo for a position on the Board of Directors of the Port Authority of Guam. I first met Oscar in the late nineteen-sixties. After arriving in Guam and working in a motorcycle shop, coworkers took me to the track in Appra Heights. They told me, this is Mister Calvo's land, and he always lets us ride. Over the years, Oscar and I became good friends, and his mom and dad, Hermia and Jose Calvo, made me and many other riders feel like part of their family. Oscar always made me feel like a brother. As a little background on Oscar and his family, I'd like to read you an article that was written in two thousand one when Guam International Raceway in Chigo was opened, and the off-road portion of it was named after his parents. It's titled, Where It All Began. And I'm gonna put my glasses on to read this. Before, before smoking wheels, before the Guam Racing Federation, there were, before people even began to recognize Guam's potential as a venue for motorsports, there was a core group of motor enthusiasts, and there was a local couple who lent them ride bikes on their land. If not for the goodwill of that couple, Hermia and Jose Calvo, the racing events in August fourth and fifth, two thousand one, might never have been. In fact, the park itself might never have been. Now with the dedication of the off-road portion of the track to Jose and Hermia Calvo, people around the world were linked their names, and rightly so, to the success of motorsports on Guam. Two of their sons, Rick and Oscar, tell a story that shows Jose Calvo had a heart of gold. He also understood a thing or two about human nature. "One day, we were down there with my dad on the ranch. My dad did some farming," recalls Rick Calvo, referring to his family land in Appra Heights. "There were some guys riding around on motorcycles here, and I said, Dad, how come those guys are riding here? We need to tell them it's private property." All Dad said was, "Yeah." As we were leaving, I was surprised when he stopped the Jeep and told one of the young riders to gather his friends because he had something he wanted to tell them. "This is private property," told him, "just don't horse around and don't kill the plants." He stopped just short of deputizing them, Rick Calvo joked. He let them keep riding. He said to me, boy, he called me boy, where will they, where are they gonna go if we don't let them ride here? Jose Calvo recognized the passion for off-roading shared by the likes of John Benner, Eddie Sanchez, Pedro Flores, Jesse Stein, Jimmy Cameron, Kenny Pierre, Fred Benton, Ken Flores, and Pickle Simers, the Tahaji Brothers, to name a few. They were gonna ride their bikes no matter what, and they needed a place to do it. "It was nice over here," said Henry Simpson, who today is president of the Guam Racing Federation. Back in the sixties, Simpson was one of those impetuous young bikers happily cutting his own trails through the scrub and Calvo land. It was beautiful natural terrain. We didn't have to build any jumps or anything, just cleared a little. It was a great place to ride. There are all kinds of bikes back then, big and small would race against each other. My parents never asked for anything in return, Oscar called, and that his father would let people farm parts of the property also. My dad was a real gentleman. My parents got something, then okay. If they didn't ask for it, but they didn't ask for it. There was plenty of room here. Of course, he admits that Calvo's eleven kids got something out of it, free admission and the excitement of having a racetrack next door. Riders from those days will remember Hermia Calvo treating them to delicious baked goods that she made in a small family bakery. Her daughter operates Tita's Bakery using Hermia Calvo's recipes. Simpson said that Hermia Calvo, a selfless and happy woman, loved to see the racers enjoy themselves. As the races got bigger and the racing scene grew more organized, Simpson said various groups and clubs agreed to pay property taxes on the Calvo land. Then a death in nineteen seventy-nine and a subsequent string of lawsuits threatened the future of Appra Heights Track. "After the death, they could have closed it down," said Oscar, "but they didn't. A lot of people will have said, that's it, no more." My father was a very religious man. He believed that God would take care, no matter how hard the hardships were, the pain and agony would resolve itself. Rick and family members had misgivings about continuing. Simpson said everybody involved learned a lot from the incident. It was clear that some legal arrangement had to be reached. Eventually, sixty acres of the property was leased to racing groups to ensure the protection of the rest of the family land from involvement in any legal action that might result from accidents at the track. Someday, the racers would have to find a new place, but for now, they were welcome to use Calvo land. Rick Calvo said that the people in Dandito and Chigo will, will come to like their neighborhood attraction. For one thing, it will be engineered by pros over here. It was an eyeball thing, he laughs. Finger thumb, Oscar demonstrated, sighting down his arm. "Yeah, we really miss the track. It's so quiet around here now." Today, the Appra Heights land has been divided into lots for the family to share. Some of the survey stakes run down the middle of the track. My father was very supportive of motorcycle racing. He used to treat them as family, said Rick Calvo. Up until the time he died, my father said to let the racers use the land as long as possible. So it is with honor and gratitude that the Guam Racing Federation has chosen to dedicate the off-road portion of the new Guam International Raceway Park to a couple who gave so much to the sport, Hermia and Jose Calvo. So his parents give Oscar the backbone that he shows today. And Oscar's also a wounded Vietnam veteran. He was blown out of a twenty-five-foot guard tower during combat. Oscar retired from GTA with an exemplary record, and he has been an active member of the community and CLTC Board Leader. His family has asked him to assume the role of family leader and spokesman to negotiate any family business. Oscar has many brothers and sisters, and his ability to facilitate, enable them to work together as one is one of his many skills that will make him a great board member for the Port Authority of Guam. And lastly, he's an outstanding cook, so I highly recommend him for this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the senators have any questions in this panel? Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I'm Miss Joanne Brown, General Manager for the port.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. I'm here to provide favorable testimony to the appointment of Mister Oscar Ada Calvo to serve as a member of the Port Authority Board of Directors. I've known Oscar for many years, and I certainly concur with Henry Simpson that Oscar is an exceptional cook. I think he'll blend very well at the port, because there's a lot of exceptional cooks at the Port Authority of Guam. But I've also had the opportunity to directly work with and for Oscar Calvo. When I was the Assistant Director for Soil and Water Conservation at the University of Guam, Mister Calvo was the chairman of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. And during that time that he was there, he recognized there were a number of issues. Many of those issues still persist today with regards to proper administration of both the agricultural, residential, and commercial leased properties of the Tomorrowland Trust. Mister Calvo recognized very early on in the process that the staffing capacity and ability of the existing staff at CLTC to execute the type of work and research that needed to be done with Tomorrowland Trust properties could not be done in-house. He partnered with us at the University of Guam to essentially do a proper review of all the agricultural land leases initially. During this time, it's probably the only main time in the history of Tomorrowland Trust since it was created, that there were actual inspections of Land Trust properties. Unfortunately, as a result of that, a report was put together for this purpose, there was a tremendous amount of misuse of Land Trust land. This applied to the agricultural leases, the residential leases, and unfortunately, commercial leases. Many of these properties of which numbers of years had gone by, and money, many, many dollars that should have been reinvested back into the Tomorrowland Trusts to benefit our people, were never pursued. Tough decisions needed to be made. They were not popular. There was an expectation that these things should just be allowed to slide. Mister Calvo didn't agree with that. We moved forward to continue to do that, and a lot of that work that, that was executed during his time as chairman is documented. None of that work happened prior to his tenure as chairman. I gauge very well, almost none of that has continued since he left CLTC. So I certainly do support his nomination, because I've, I've recognized his dedication. He's very outspoken. I think that's a very good thing. I think more people need to speak out. He's very upfront in letting you know what his positions are on issues. He's fair. He's dedicated. There's no reason Mister Calvo needs to do community service. I mean, Mister Calvo will be well provided for till his very last day. The fact that he's continued to do so, the time, not only as a retired employee of the Guam Telephone Authority, but he went back many years later to serve on the GTA Board during a time of transition, when GTA was being transitioned from a government entity to a private company. His years on Tomorrowland Trust, he served over six years on Tomorrowland Trust in serving with the board. And now he's expressed very much an interest in with the support of the governor to serve on the port board. And I don't doubt during a time of tremendous growth and development of the Port Authority of Guam, that he will continue to contribute his time, his effort, his candor, which I think in most cases is always appreciated. Whether you agree with Mister Calvo or not, you will know where you stand. And I think that, to me, in terms of a person's quality, is very important. I do hope that your committee will take action on Mister Calvo's nomination. He might not say it, but I'll say it for him. I think he was very unfairly treated during a previous legislature when he went up for renomination to the Tomorrowland Trust Board, and no action was taken by the committee, by the land committee, to move forward his confirmation. I think at the end of the day, whether you decide to vote for him or not, I'm hopeful that you will vote for him, that he should have his day on the floor of the legislature. I think when people are willing to come forth and give their time, because he's not being paid much to do this, as many of us are, and certainly those of us of the port in my capacity and our administration are very well compensated for our time, that he should be given due respect. And I hope you will allow him that opportunity to serve the Port Authority of Guam and the community that, that he values very much. So I certainly, on behalf of the administrative staff of the port, testify in favor of his nomination, hope you will also give him due consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Brown. I'm gonna go ahead and call, if anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call for it, Mister Calvo. I'm gonna go ahead and to start with, just for disclosure, disclose that Mister Calvo is my first cousin. His father and my, his mother and my father are brothers and sisters. Before we, before we go into any questions, I, I just need to clarify one thing on your, on your application. It shows you attached to a resume, and under employment profile, you show here that from the year two thousand eight to present, you are the chairman of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. So I just need to know from you, is that in fact accurate? To the present day, you are the chairman?
No, I'm not. I'm not, sir.
Okay. So that ended, that tenure on that commission ended approximately when?
Yeah, I think about twenty-twelve. You know, it's...
Twenty-twelve, okay. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead, before I ask my questions, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the panel to ask whatever questions they may have. Senator Yamashita?
Senator, can I just introduce myself?
I'm sorry.
I, I know that you did already.
I got ahead of myself. Please, I'm sorry. Go ahead and make a statement.
Okay, my name is Oscar Calvo, and, you know, first and foremost, I, I wanted really to thank all the supporters today here to come on my behalf. But, you know, Senator, these, these are good people supporting me, and I've worked hard, and I've always tried to be out there in the committee to give a helping hand. When I first got this nomination from the governor, you know, it took me three times to really reconsider this, because, you know, I, I didn't really want first time and the second time, and, you know, and I simply called the governor at the time and says, "Gov, I don't want to go to the same process, what I was done, you know, by the previous chairman," where he literally told me, and, you know, and honestly, and I, and I say this with conviction, that when, you know, Senator Ben Palina told me at the time, that I didn't, that the committee at whole recommended me not to be put on the floor because I didn't have the vote, and he, he didn't want to embarrass me on the floor. And I said, "Senator, hey, put it out. I'll take my chances. If all fifteen went against me, that's good." But then, and I want to ask each one of you senator at this point, because, you know, he said to me, "It's a privilege that I have, and I took it upon myself." You know, and by the way, Oscar, even if your name was out there, I would vote you down, but that's only one. So when I asked the committee report at the time, he didn't want to give it to me. I had to take action by using the sunshine aglow. And when I got the sunshine aglow, I was sitting at five-two-on-one. He was the only one against it. So my question to this, is, is, are we gonna go with this all the way? And, 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 you know, because if it's, if we're not, then, you know, I, that's my only holdback, and I, and I told the governor, I says, "I really don't want to go to that same scenario again," you know, of being, being used, and especially as a veteran in the Tomorrow. It really bothered me, you know? It really bothered me because that's something I didn't deserve. I mean, everybody has a day in court, you know? And, and that was the only thing I was asking him. And you know that, because I approached you on this two time at the time, and I went door knocking to each one of the senators, you know? And they did tell me, she says, some of them even told me, "You can take it to the bank. That's how good my vote is." Some said, "Hey, we have different political, that's fine." And, and I know, Senator, it's important for me to emphasize that today, because I may not have this chance anymore, but I think, in reality, I want to make sure that whoever comes up here for a board, whether it be GTA Board or PUAG or whatever, any, okay? Give that same person that same chance, you know, because I think when you guys went out for election, the people of Guam voted you, but didn't say, "Be specific, just vote for Democrat or Republican." So give that, whether they, whether you didn't like the person, the option is there. There's only fifteen votes to be cast. So all I'm asking is that, give me that same support from you senators, you know? And everybody knows me for that matter. So that's, that's my, my, that's my, my, my speech for today, because I started to write this thing, and I'm telling you, you know, I said, "I, I gotta do this, because nobody deserves this," for that, for that matter. And I want to make this, make clear and, and sure that it's, that it's put on the record, because I don't want to go to that same premium, and, and if it's not, then, hey, senators, just, just get it over with today, and whoever's gonna vote for me, say yes, and not, then I'll be okay. I'm done.
Does anybody have any questions? Senator McCready? Senator Duñez?
Thank, thank you, Mister Chairman, and thank you for, for the Port Authority and the people who testified in support of you. I've known you for a while, and, and everything that they have said resonates, and it's true. You're a hard worker, and, and you're passionate about, about what happened to you before, and you're passionate about what you want to happen to you in the future. And all I can say is that just looking at you and seeing the quality of people that has testified in, on your behalf today, that it's a no-brainer, and that we should give you the opportunity to have your day in the legislature. And I thank you for being transparent about what happened to you, and I, I don't believe that will happen again, but I, I totally support your, your confirmation, and I guess, as you said earlier, you can take that to the bank. So congratulations, and, and thank you for taking this opportunity to express your feelings and to, to, your willingness to be a part of the board. And, and it's something that I think Chief Marquez said early on is what, what separates you from the rest of, of, of the people that he knows, is you're a team player. And, and, and the Lord knows, we need a lot more team players leading this government in the right direction. So thank you and congratulations. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator McCready. Senator Duñez?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, and I just have a comment and for the record and for the committee and those that are in the public to maybe understand and expand on Senator Brown's comments earlier. I was the director at the time that this, that land management, when this committee was put together, and Senator Brown and Dr. Barber from the University of Guam did an outstanding job. And Oscar, yes, you did lead the charge on this issue, and, and I was so proud of you. Because like Senator Brown said, it was a very unpopular thing even at that time. And me as the director, I remember walking in and remember folks that wouldn't talk to me and the like, because you were pushing for something that was very controversial to make sure that the right thing was done, and to make sure that once and for all, that, that it would be understood what it meant to hold those public lands in trust, to ensure that they go for the right purposes, and to ensure that those who lease properties have, do pay their fair share, and, and that the trust is intact and made whole. And so Senator Brown said, yes, it's tough to stand up sometimes and, and go against the grain. But the fact of the matter is, I know you're capable of doing that, and I know because of what you had done, that it is, there's no question in terms of your integrity and the way you will approach things. The port is a very complex area, and there's a lot to be done moving forward, but I've always seen you, Oscar, you're tireless, and you put your commitment in, and you'll be there, and that's one of the reasons why I have no problem, you know, confirming you or at least voting in affirmative for your confirmation. It is unfortunate, as many have said here, I think, I wanted to point out all these things for the record, because I think the thing you've been most famous for, for the last three years, unfortunately, is the person who hasn't had their day on the floor to be voted up or down. And so I'm glad we're here today. I'm honored that you will more than likely serve on this board, and I'm, I'm hope this committee can take away a little bit, and maybe some will talk to you personally about your accomplishments at Tomorrowland Trust, and the reason why it's on better footing now is because of the work that you did there. So you're very knowledgeable, you know what you're doing, and you certainly have my vote. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senatoreta.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record also, that Mr. Calvo is my uncle. You know, my hat's off to you, sir, for coming right back to the same body and putting your packet in for the Port Authority Board. It is an injustice whenever anyone who comes before this body for confirmation doesn't get that vote of up or down, whether you're gonna get confirmed or not, and your packet is held in committee. It is an injustice. One individual should not have that, that power to decide for the complete body whether someone should be confirmed or not. It took away your right. It took away our right to vote for you or against you. So, I'm glad that you're back here again. You have my complete support, and you have my vote, and I look to vote on your confirmation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senatoreta. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanna thank Mr. Calvo and his family and those who provided testimony. And I just wanna state that I met Mr. Calvo on several occasions. Of course, we met on other things, but I was always inspired by the fact or signaling me that he wanted to serve on certain commissions or board, and I was always cautious about how he would be treated going forward. I went through your packet, and I wanna thank you for your service to our community, your civic involvement, and also all those things that were stated in the testimony. I wanna thank you for all of that as well. I believe with your experience, you have the ability to navigate through these complex issues at the port. And I'm very encouraged by this nomination, and I thank the chairman for scheduling this confirmation hearing. So, you have my full support, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. I just have really one question. You were nominated about a month ago. I presume you've had some time then to become familiar with what's going on down at the port, some of the things that they're trying to accomplish. So, tell me how you think you're gonna be able to fit in and contribute to the policymaking that the board is responsible for?
That's very true. I went to the first board meet and then the last board meeting just to really, before this nomination was coming in because like I said, you know, when I got noticed for my nomination, I was really hesitant. It's too debating, you know, should I go, should I not? Do I do all these things? But I decided to go to a board meeting last week, and I think how I can fit in there to support the, 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 um, commercial board is I have to learn more about their system, how it functions, their management, and so forth. So, to me, it would be very premature right now to say to you, "I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna do that" because I'm new to that board, and I gotta know how it's run, and, and with the profession with Mr. Santos and other board, and Joanne Brown being the director, which, you know, and I and her have worked in, in, in the past. So, I am the type that, even when I was the chairman in the Tomorrowland Trust, I traveled to all these places from north to south, and you know, I have gone to... So, that my plan is to really go to every department and see where are their weaknesses, and how can I help them, and so forth. So, that's my plan of action there. That's, that's, that's one way that I'm gonna approach. But to rightly say, right now, there are a lot of things going down in the port, you know, new exciting things, new country and so forth and all that stuff, which I have no knowledge in this point in time. So, it'd be very premature for me to really directly to say, you know, until I start getting into the, into, into the, the management level, whatever, and of course, I would certainly make, and Joanna, I would make an issue that I'm, I would go, and you know that, that I do go to all departments, you know, the boards that I was sitting in, and feel the employees, you know. What do they really want? What are they short? And so forth. Because that's the only way I can go back and then restructure my mind and say, "Okay, this is not what we're having. We're having problems with this." But I won't know that until I'm in there. And, and giving the opportunity, senators, you know, to serve as a board for the, for the, for the board, I think it was a really an honor for me from the governor. And, and, you know, he tasked me, I mean, three times he kept asking me, you know, "On Fox, you gotta go down there?" I said, "My God, I don't want, you know, I didn't wanna go through this scan." And that's why I emphasized this earlier. I wanted to make sure that let the chips fall where it is. Okay, if I get fifteen votes, good. If I get fourteen, good. If I get one, that's good. That's fine. But at least I was given my, my, my time and day in, 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 in the legislature. And like I said, no other board members in the future, whether you chair it or you chair it or whatever, give that, that same person the same, you know, because for them too, they, they come here, and then they, we have to face you, and then you get a slap on the back or whatever. I don't agree with that, you know? And you know me, Tom, I have never hidden anything, and I'm straightforward, you know? I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't play around and be simple. So, I just wanna, that's my comments to you, and to me, what you're asking me, I think until I get in there and learn more about the issue and the system. But I think, you know, I'm gonna try my best. The worst scenario that I can do is do wrong and be terminated.
Thank you. There's no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Have a good day.
We also had Anne Marie Arceo signed up. Did you wanna give testimony?
Half a day, buenas. Senator Duñez, how do I translate for the Senator McCready for the board? Okay, Malik. Half a day, maniello. Si dos más, señora, pertenecen a, en, en cuenta de su guine. Go, si Anne Marie Arceo. Uh, hubo presencia dos na organizacion guine pabu. Uh, i, Jorau Academy. Zani otro i, ena dahin ilena la cultura en Somorukumo, tori dos, uh, huge eluluhi. Uno i scuela, zani otro i para isagan cultura. Hulo gui ge zaipa. Pues, puti osangananau, ezige na gages uguinis, sa hu hongi na genen tati guina tempo gi dos midsize na pabu hutungu si Oscar. Sa guiza somasanau gi i inango kun tanu et Somoru. Anai humalumzo, za ugagauzun atanu, ni paramanai famagonta. Zani artista. Za, esisiña besangan, go simply shu hafa besangan pabu. Dos hanamalalagu zo, angen patapetzi ge esti menso ni lenguahi zen cultura. Uno, angen sini onateni tau tau. Za unli, si zoski za sia. Pues esta semprí angokuzen, no? Za, yes, Oscar, bete si guzi na kumo desi ki o maami zanesti na tau ta matotu, pa ezun atanu ni paraben fan manai. Za, na siguguru lokui na Bali zan tetegui tetu maami, mahetuk si Oscar. Ha na siguguru a agen zu tori tempo hafa biran mimizu ko entetegui. Uh, lo para menaule angen tensoña. Tori tempo gi otu monidiya, sini be alok na huli si zoski za guiza. Anai ya importante i otro. Kumo guasen shania zan kura sonia. Para i tau tau tanu. Zani famagonta mona gi tempo popo lusi hafa gua, pues nao nenau para guau. Para beso poti. Uh, malinguham, yes, Oscar. Ni ti manasanau esta gi i inango kun tanu et Somoru sa ezun na departmentu nesita tau tau. Ni sini ta angoku sa importante esti tanu para hita. Importante. Za, anoat tetanan para hita, angen toru man matsuli tanu, hafa patasangan. Para manek guatu, taza otu tanu ki Mariana si zonit Somoru. Pues para guau malingu i inango kun tanu et Somoru na taigui gui gui na pro adai edzu. Sa hutungu na magahet zen fiat i guinaizania ni tau tau ta pro adai, ano. Lo gi otu banda hutungu na fiat i guinaizania po fanadura. Ni tau tau ta za, angen malagosi zos na pojano guatu gi i pueto naturidak guahan po fanadura, pues biado. Ta accepta na buenti ezige sa goanya po fanadura za goang tensoña zan planunya si zoski. Pues Joan ben dison para hagu, na engagana si Oscar gui. Za, poi dia, Oscar si sini ben spiha puat aduru, tsalu. Atuka, ti gaia gui nasuntu lo tori tempo hutungu na gage kura sonia pu so poti ilenguahi zen ikutura. Za tsuka manek guatu, pueto naturidak guahan. Pa masia hafana departmentu debi diu tatki lo ilenguahi zen ikutura. Pues hutungu na gui na banda lokui semprí ato vitetsoña gi pueto naturidak guahan. Sen hafa mas, enaua, bus guo so poti si Oscars, za manhongi zunesti na tau tau. Esta quantis años desi dos midsize utungu. Za taza no huliit na ti po magahet. Atuka guanabai na fit mi. Za nputi lo para menauleta. Edi fit mi na para idiretuni tau tau. Za, za, na claro ha, ano. Pues, sen hafa mas, si dos más, sini esti na opertenada.
Si zos más, sen, any senanamo? If any of you wanna ask questions, you have to ask it in tomorrow. Okay, so, sen... There being no questions. Thank you very much.
I didn't think so. Si dos más, si, not in tomorrow at least. Oguaisa hamdu, si dos más, si.
Okay, if there's no other questions, the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, and Maritime Transportation hereby adjourns this public hearing. The time is now two forty-three.